Good evening and welcome to this regularly scheduled school board meeting for District 196. It is a beautiful Monday and it's July 25th, so welcome. I will ask you to join us with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, thank you for joining us. I'll call the meeting to order. We'll ask for an approval of the agenda. Board, there are no deletions or changes on the agenda, so it's as outlined.
So moved?
Second.
We have a motion by Cory, a second by Bianca, to approve the agenda as outlined. All in favor of the agenda indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes on a four-zero vote. We are short three board members tonight. They just couldn't be here, or maybe it's just too nice outside. This evening, you are gonna, we're gonna blow your socks off. We have got recognitions and this district is proud of, we're proud of to get to celebrate with our students. But this evening, we have got a showcase of students to show you this evening and recognize and celebrate with. First up is the State Adapted Softball CI Tournament Team. They place third place, and they're the Dakota Hawks. It's soft, adapted softball.
Hi, my name is Scott Oxley. I am the coach for the Dakota Hawks CI softball team. Just a fantastic season, fantastic kids, represented the district and their schools very, very well. In the state tournament, the two games that we had to win, we won both those games by one run. So they were very competitive. So I'd like to introduce to you one of our captains, and this is Thomas Christoffersen. Ada Kramer is our catcher. I should say that Thomas is an outfielder for us. And then Kyle Jacobson, he's our other captain. He's our first baseman. Jacob Stats, go ahead and wave. He is outfield. And then Andrew Nathie, he is our third baseman. Emily Cole, and she played outfield. And then Henry Isley, also played outfield. And just a remarkable end to the season, so thank you for hosting us.
Woo-hoo! Hey guys, congratulations! I know, it's kinda funny because we can't shake hands anymore.
Congratulations!
Congratulations, you guys! Was it super fun? Was it super fun?
Awesome, awesome. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Going from the Adapted Softball CI Tournament Team to the Class AAA Girls Golf State Team Tournament from Eastview High School, we'll call up Tamara Calucci, and she will introduce our golf team.
Good evening, Chairperson Magnuson, School Board Members and Superintendent Krieger. I'm very honored to be here tonight, and I would like to thank you, the School Board, the School District and Eastview for their support and prioritization of athletics and the participation of including so many students. I'm also grateful for the dedication and understanding of the Eastview staff that shows so much support for our students. The committed Bruce Miller and the other admin, and the super encouraging Matt Percival, who is always there and shows strong leadership and unending support of our program. All of these things have contributed to the success of the Eastview Girls Golf Program. And because of these things, we've gone from 11 players on our team in 2015 to now having 40 to 60 players on our team the last five years. With the size of the team and the strong commitment of the girls, we've developed a program that encourages girls to grow in their love of golf and the game and to work on their golf game year-round. After a canceled spring sports season during COVID, golf was about the only thing people could do. So our players took full advantage of that, working in their yards and their basements and playing on their own in their own social-distanced way. These past two golf seasons have been super fun, and I've been humbled by the successes that we've had. I'm thankful for a supportive parent group as well as a booster club that supports us in getting our additional coaches. My assistant coach, Alex Curry, and our developmental coaches, Sheena Greiner, Henry Gerton, and Dana Manichkouski, all worked tirelessly to bring a fun, yet competitive spirit to the team. Our team has been fortunate to have many successes the past two years on all levers of our program. Our varsity worked hard to be named undefeated conference champions and section champions two years in a row, and we improved our state performance from fifth place last year to third place this season. I believe a lot of this is because of our strong team cohesion that these girls helped create along with our captains, strong team sportsmanship, and hard work ethic. The girls standing in front of you, Alara Egner, Megan Young, and Addison Schaefer, are just a few of the golfers on our, on our team this year. It is my joy to coach them, and I want to thank you all for having us here tonight. It's been an honor to be able to acknowledge them and their success in this lifelong sport we call golf. Thank you.
Congratulations. We have any golf parents in the audience? You should stand. Thank you. We know, I should've had that done before. We know nothing happens without the support of great parents and staff, so congratulations. Thank you very much for coming this evening. Next in recognition is the Class AA National Speech and Debate Tournament. First, we'll call up Dan Hodges to introduce his first-place winners and talk about Apple Valley High School receiving the Schools of Outstanding Distinction Award. Good evening, Coach.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone, Chairperson Magnuson, School Board Members, and Superintendent Krieger. My name is Daniel Hodges, and I am the Director of Speech at Apple Valley High School, and it is really great to be here with you because that means that our students have excelled. It's always nice to be here to celebrate our achievements, the achievements of our students. But the National Speech and Debate Association's National Tournament is the pinnacle of our season, and the, any wins or the experience at that tournament is the height of their career for a lot of students. So this one is really special. It's one thing to qualify for the national tournament. We are in a very competitive district, and qualifying is very hard. But it's another thing to qualify in your first year as a competitor and go to the national tournament and leave a champion. I would like to introduce to you Mafaz Muhammad Ali, who is a sophomore and, I guess, no longer a novice, but last year was her first year competing in speech and debate, and she went to the national tournament and became the humorous national champion. What she has done here is extremely rare as a first-year student, but Mafaz also represents something else very rare, and in fact, a first. She's the first Black Muslim young woman in a hijab to compete on the national stage in an interpretation event. Her, her feat in being the first is only preceded by Halima Badri, also from Apple Valley, who was the oratory champion, who was the first Black Muslim woman in a hijab to be represented on the national stage, meaning they were in the top six of their category. If you knew anything about the, the activity and the association, representation matters, and it matters that these young women were there, and now other young women will see them and know that they too belong in this activity. So after 13 rounds and 46 judges, Mafaz wins the national tournament in humorous interpretation. But I'm also here to speak about Apple Valley being named a School of Outstanding Distinction. Schools of Outstanding Distinction are the tournament's top 10 teams in the country. They do not rank them out, but they list the top 10, and again, Apple Valley has been named a School of Outstanding Distinction, meaning we showed strength in both speech and debate at the tournament. And just for, for reference, we brought 13 students to the tournament. All 13 made it to elimination rounds. 11 then made it to the quarterfinal round. Nine moved on to the semifinal round. And then we had two national finalists. Of those semifinalists that were left behind from the final round, four of them were seventh place, and that means they were next into the final because there are only six in the final round. Not here is Emily Melville, who are other finalists, who was fourth in program oral interpretation. So I'm incredibly proud of our students and the team of coaches we have coaching them. I am grateful for an administration that is, for their undying support of what we do. So thank you to Principal Drummons and the rest of Apple Valley's administration for, for giving us the support to ensure that these students can reach their highest potential. Thank you.
Congratulations! They're gonna send us the link so we can watch it. Parents, congratulations. Thank you so much. Thank you all for coming. Congratulations. Wow, amazing. I know they're gonna send us the link so that we can watch her performance. What an accomplishment, first place, and this is your, in the, in the nation, and this is your first time. But we have, coming up right behind her, next we have Ross Eichel, and he's going to come up to the podium and talk about Eagan High School and their Outstanding Distinguished Service Awards and, or distinguished award, and you're champion.
Yeah, thank you. My name is Ross Eichel, and I'm the head speech coach at Eagan High School. So Chairperson Magnuson, members of the board, Superintendent Krieger, thank you for this opportunity to celebrate students. Much of what I would say was covered by Mr. Hodges, but I want to take a moment to celebrate. James, he took second place at the national tournament, so
In the same
In the same category, yeah. So there are literally millions of high school students in the United States of America, and the funniest two of them go to this district. We have James Eiger at Eagan High School. He's been an outstanding student for four years on the team. He's off to college next fall, and he's gonna do wonderful things for the world. He was coached by Kristy Schulzenberg in humor, and he's been an outstanding person. The school as well, we had several students there as well. They also did well. To mention something, the Outstanding School of Distinction Award is only given to 10 schools. There are thousands upon thousands of schools in the country. So it is your support and the support of the administration at the buildings and dedicated coaches and families. James's mother is here tonight. Thank you for the support. Who, who make this all happen, so thank you for that. And then unable to be here, but also to give a shout-out to Eastview High School that got a Speech School of Excellent Award, meaning they were in the top, after the top 10 of all schools, and they have speech and debate, and they were in the top 10 of speech. So thank you for your support of the fine arts. Thank you to Dr. Rykowski and her support of the fine arts, and then to our families and wonderful staff, and of course, students like James who make it happen. Thank you for this opportunity to celebrate success.
Congratulations. I told you we'd knock your socks off. That's pretty amazing. Like Superintendent Krieger said, we're all pretty funny. We are all pretty funny here in 196. But that's amazing. One and two in the nation. Next on the agenda is Superintendent Recognition of Students and Staff.
Thank you. Congratulations to students in the Journalism and Video Production Programs at Apple Valley and Eastview High Schools on winning eight of the 21 Student Production Awards presented by the Upper Midwest Emmy Foundation earlier this year. Apple Valley won two awards for its Eagle Eye Show, and Eastview won six awards for content produced for its news show, which is called The Flash. And congratulations to the Eastview High School students who earned two top-three finishes at the Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America National Leadership Conference in San Diego. Say that fast. Earlier this month, 20 students had top-three finishes at the state conference to qualify for competition at the national conference. We will get a chance to recognize these students at a future board meeting. Next, in addition to our incredible students, we also have incredible staff, and you will get to meet some of our new administrators. So I would like to call up Director of Elementary Education Sally Saliday, Director of Special Education Janet Fimmon, and Director of Secondary Education Mike Bosani, Michael Bosani, to introduce new administrators, including four new elementary principals, a special education coordinator, and our new safety and climate coordinator.
We're a big group. Good evening, Chairperson Magnuson, members of the board, and Superintendent Krieger. I want to begin our time here tonight by reading a powerful quote by Dr. Rita Pearson, who's a lifelong, who was a lifelong professional educator and motivational counselor. She said, "Every child deserves a champion, an adult who will never give up on them, who understands the power of connection and insists that they can become the very best they can possibly be." This evening, Janet Fimmon, Michael Bosani, and I are excited to be here to introduce seven amazing educators we are adding to our administrative team who hold this quote to be true. It is my privilege to introduce four elementary principals and the new coordinator for District 196 online. As you see behind me, some of these are familiar faces, and some of them are brand-new. So the first person I'd like to introduce to you is Mr. Drew Geldner, who will be the next principal at Greenleaf Elementary School. He has been a principal at Red Pine Elementary since coming to District 196 in 2015. Prior to coming to District 196, Drew was a teacher in the St. Paul Public Schools, principal in Rice Lake, Wisconsin, and Sky Oaks in Burnsville. Please join me in congratulating Drew Geldner.
Greenleaf Elementary is a special place to learn and grow. It has incredible students, awesome staff, and a very supportive school community, and I am honored to be part of such a great school. So thank you for tonight.
Okay, next, I'd like to introduce Mr. Tony Washington, who is the next principal at Red Pine Elementary School. Tony was the assistant administrator at Red Pine this past school year. Prior to that, Tony has been a principal in Edina, an assistant administrator in Eden Prairie, Inver Grove Heights, and St. Cloud. Tony began his educational career as a sixth-grade teacher in Hopkins. Please join me in congratulating Tony Washington.
Good evening. First of all, I just wanted to say thank you so much for this opportunity. I have wanted to be in this district for such a long time, and had the fantastic opportunity of being able to follow in the shoes of Drew Geldner. So also thank you to Drew for the, for all the mentoring and everything that's been going on since I've been here. So I really, really appreciate the opportunity, and I am in such a great place at Red Pine Elementary. So, thank you.
Okay, now I'd like to introduce Leah Hack, who will be the next principal, who is the next principal at Pinewood Community Elementary School. Leah was the principal at Diamond Path Elementary School of International Studies for the last four years, and prior to that, she was the assistant administrator at Diamond Path. Leah was also a teacher in our district as well, so please join me in congratulating Leah Hack.
Thank you. I am beyond excited to be the next principal at Pinewood Elementary. I look forward to continuing to provide each child what they need to be successful academically and socially and emotionally, and I'm excited for the work ahead, and I'm committed to ensuring that Pinewood continues to be a community school that values everyone that walks through the door. So thank you so much for this opportunity.
Okay, now a new face. Next, I'd like to introduce Mr. Rob Nelson, who is the next principal at Diamond Path Elementary School of International Studies, and again, is new to District 196. Prior to joining District 196, Rob was the principal at Woodland Elementary School in Brooklyn Park. Rob began his educational career as a teacher in the Burnsville-Eagan-Savage School District, and then hired to his first principalship at Harriet Bishop Elementary in Savage. So please join me in congratulating Mr. Rob Nelson.
Good evening. I'm really excited to be a part of the district, Superintendent Krieger, members of the board. I just want to thank you and the cabinet. They have been nothing but gracious and inviting. Members of the principal community have reached out to me already. It already feels like home. I'm so, I'm, I'm super thrilled to be here. A shout-out to the Diamond Path School community. I've already gotten to know some parents and some staff members. Can't wait to get to know the students and move forward on the Diamond Path together. So thank you.
And last, but certainly not least, I'd like to introduce Lynn Hernandez, who is the next coordinator of our District 196 online school. Prior to that, Lynn served two one-year positions at Greenleaf and Roseman Elementary Schools as an assistant administrator, and spent 14 years as the principal at Diamond Path Elementary School of International Studies. Please join me in congratulating Lynn Hernandez.
Good evening, and thank you. As a retired employee of District 196 who flunked retirement, I'm honored to be asked to assume the role of coordinator of our online school. Jenny Hewling, the former coordinator, along with her team of dedicated teachers and numerous district support staff, created a program that allows students to successfully continue their learning in an online format. I'm committed to continuing to work with this passionate group of people and provide students with an education that is equitable, personalized, and flexible. I thank you for this opportunity and for your support of 196 online.
I often joke with our retired administrators, they don't go far for very long because we bring them right back and capitalize on that experience. So thank you, thanks for having us. It's my privilege to introduce and welcome Sarah, another new face, Sarah Adi Phillips, as the new special education coordinator for the district. This position will support several of our elementary schools as well as a variety of itinerant service providers. Sarah comes to us with over 20 years of experience supporting students and families who are receiving services in special education. She spent much of her time and her career working in California, and we are excited that a fam, that family brought her back to Minnesota to brave the cold. Please join me, join me in congratulating Sarah Adi Phillips.
Thank you, good evening. I just want to say how excited I am to join District 196. I have been welcomed with open arms by everyone, and I'm really looking forward to serving the students of this community. Thank you.
Good evening. It is my privilege to introduce Rashard Salter as our district's new school safety and climate coordinator. This is a position that was previously held by Mary Thompson. Mr. Salter started his career as a teacher and most recently served as the dean of students at Fairbow Middle School. Prior to that, he has 21 years of experience as a police officer, including 10 years of additional service in the US Army Reserves. Mr. Salter has a bachelor's degree in elementary education, a master's degree in educational leadership, and is currently working towards his doctoral degree in educational administration. We're very fortunate to have him join our team. So please welcome me, or please, yeah, please join me in welcoming Rashard Salter to this new role.
Hello, and thank you for this great opportunity to present me. I'm not only an employee of this district, I am a coach and a parent that have a vested interest in this district and how it succeeds. I have three kids that still attend, I guess, District 196 schools and play sports, and which provides me an opportunity and makes me want to do better in this district. Based on my prior training experience, I believe the impact that I will bring to this position in the district will be endless. I am committed and dedicated to providing a safe environment where students can learn and grow. My goal is to improve all safety and climate aspects for the district's students and teachers. Thank you.
Thank you all for being here this evening. For the new people that are coming into the district, welcome. For the people who are switching jobs, we're glad you switched to someplace else in the district and not someplace else outside the district. For all of you, good luck on your new challenges. Every, it's, when I watch the people that are up here, and I know the backgrounds of most of you, it's just, again, one of those things that I said earlier, we're gonna knock the socks off everybody, and these are people that can knock the socks off what you do. So congratulations. I hope you find success and, and a good vibe in your new challenge. Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you. Goodness, I was gonna joke. Yes, are you done? Okay. Exciting to have so many new faces and people in new jobs, so congratulations to all of you. We'll move on to the items of the consent agenda. There is no special, no one signed up this evening for a special communication request. Under the consent agenda, we have the minutes of the June 27th, 2022 regular school board meeting. We have the minutes of the July 18th, 2022 special school board meeting. We have 2022 school board appointments. We have gifts, grants, advertising revenue, summary of claims for 2022, schedule of investments for June 2022, truth and taxation hearing, personnel exhibit, student-teacher agreements, agreements with teachers on call for educational staffing in the 2022-23, contract between Dakota County and Independent School District 196 for SHIP School Wellness Service, and computerized measurements of academic progress and instructional resources. Are there any items this evening that board members would like to have polled or have questions about? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda.
With approval? Second?
We have a motion by Art, a second by Cory. All in favor of the consent agenda indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you, that passes on a four-to-zero vote. This evening, kind of a short agenda here, there, we have no items of report, we have no items of old business, we have no items of new business. We do have one other action item this evening. We have a collective bargaining agreement with the Building Engineers Association of Independent School District 196, and Tom Peterston is up here to walk us through that.
Good evening, Chairperson Magnuson, members of the board, and Superintendent Krieger. I'll be referring to the exhibit on the collective bargaining agreement with the school district's maintenance engineers, ground supervisor, building engineers. These employees represented by the Building Engineers Association of Independent School District 196 ratified the proposed working agreement on July 20th. I'll highlight the terms of settlement for you. The increase to wages, stipends, and longevity by 2.5% in each year of the agreement. Increase the district contribution to health insurance by 5% in each year of the agreement. Increase the matching 403B contribution by $125 per year in each year of the agreement. And there were some other minor language modifications and clarifications that we made also. The total new cost during the term of this agreement will be within the parameters you've set. On behalf of the administration, I recommend that you approve the collective bargaining agreement I've just summarized, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
This is an action item for this evening, so before we move into questions, I'll ask for a motion in a second.
Motion? Second?
Motion by Bianca, second by Cory. Are there any questions from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members? As we always like to say, it's within parameters, and the board likes that because then we can plan ahead. So with that, we've got a motion by Bianca, a second by Cory, to approve the collective bargaining agreement with Building Engineers Association of Independent School District 196. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you, that passes on a four-zero vote. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Next up are items for board members and superintendents, and, well, we only have one superintendent, so I'll just say superintendent. Board members, have any items to report this evening?
No.
I have one. You might not know this, but this is Callie's last meeting. Callie is our school secret, our, the board, I suppose it's Thank you, administrative assistant. I was just, like, she's the girl Friday, Callie. If you need to know something, you call Callie. Callie, if you need to know something, you call Callie. And we are congratulating you on your new adventure, but we are sad because you are leaving us. And although she's got little feet, it's gonna take somebody with big feet to fill your job. So we thank you for what you've done, and thank you for all the support you've given the board. She's board administrative assistant and works with all of us, keeping us all in line and probably rolling her eyes sometime, like, geez, I just told them that. But Callie, I don't know how we can thank you enough. So congratulations, and I hope you enjoy your new adventure. Now we'll turn it over to the superintendent.
Okay, well, I just want to join you in, in thanking Callie for all, I might get a little emotional, so I'm gonna make it short, but really, the years of my superintendency, I've had Callie's wisdom to help get us through some challenging times and do it with such grace and poise, with the district's best interests at heart always, and I'm just so grateful that I had the opportunity to work alongside you for these past four years, five years, and looking forward to hearing more about your new adventure, and just thank you from the bottom of my heart on behalf of the kids, the staff, and the administration in this district. We all appreciate, you've kept us going, and we appreciate you. Thank you. Okay, keep rolling. So, um, I do have a few things to report. Our schools have been buzzing all summer long with summer programming. Our elementary, middle, and high schools continue to support student learning throughout the summer months. And so tonight, I would like to share a few highlights of our summer programs. The first two I want to talk about have been created since the pandemic, and so we have a couple of rather innovative programming, um, options that we're really pleased with the results that we're seeing. The first one I want to talk about is called Summer Accelerate, and that was offered in six of our elementary schools. It was the second year of this. It, this program provided targeted early intervention for second graders. It was taught by K-two schools within ea- by K-two teachers within each school. And during a visit recently, we saw students and staff so excited and so engaged that they didn't even know we were in the room. So we're really, um, learning from this experience and hoping it's something that we can take the best components of and continue to grow it and develop it in the next years. Another new program for us is called Connections, and that's a summer program designed for multilingual learners to continue their engagement throughout the summer. The focus is on improving English vocabulary and building relationships. And this year, we have fifty-eight partnerships between English learners and educators. In addition to classroom teachers, we have representation of cultural family advocates, peer professionals, food services, school nurses, specialist teachers, and interventionists who connect with these students. Because of the success of this program, the Connections leadership team has been selected to present at the program at a World Class Instructional Design Assessment National Conference this fall. And another innovative program is being put on by our American Indian Education, uh, Department. They are hosting summer cultural teaching, and students attending the camp this week will be making their own moccasins. Students in grades six through twelve will make their own pair while learning about the rich history of moccasins. Another program that we've had for several years started today, and that is Camp Propel. Nearly two thousand two hundred elementary students attended Camp Propel earlier today. This year, the three-week program is being held at nine of our elementary schools. More than three-fourths of our Camp Propel teachers are our own District 196 teachers, and we appreciate those coming and helping us out from other districts, but we are really, really encouraged to have that many of our own teachers working throughout the course of the summer as well. This program sets students up for successful beginning to their upcoming school year by providing grade-level content with a focus on science, math, and literacy. And finally, I want to end by saying we are very excited to join the Tournament of Roses President Amy Wayne Scott at Rosemont High School this Friday to accept the official Rose Parade invitation for our Rosemont High School marching band, who will perform at the twenty-twenty-three Rose Parade this coming January. District 196 is so honored to once again be part of this opportunity, and we are incredibly proud of our Rosemont marching band. And so, as we wrap up this month of July, there are still, hopefully, enough summer days left to get out and enjoy them, and we thank our staff and administrators who continue to provide services to our students over the summer, and just know that we are all getting excited to launch another great school year.
Here, here. Our next re- that comes, we come to the end of our agenda, our next regularly scheduled school board meeting is Monday, August eighth, right back here at Dakota Ridge. With that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Cory, a second by Bianca. All in favor of adjourning indicate by saying aye. Aye, we are adjourned.